Start it here in a minute if you could take your seats, please. Good morning, being 10:00 a.m. I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Special Meeting for the Budget of September 25, 2025, and Ms. Campbell will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public comment, Ms. Jody Whittaker, please. Just a reminder that you have three minutes, oh, Kathy? It's not on the agenda. Kathy, can you call the roll, please?
Pamela Althoff.
Here.
Carolyn Campbell.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Joseph Gotamaller.
Here.
Terry Greeno.
Here.
Eric Hendricks.
Present.
Carl Kaminsky.
Present.
James Kearns.
Here.
Deana Krieger. Matthew Kunkel. Brian Sager. Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala.
Present.
Larry Smith.
Here.
Patrick Sullivan.
Here.
Paul Thomas.
Here.
Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen.
Here.
Chairman Bueller.
Here.
Okay, having a forum will proceed with public comment. Just a reminder, this is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes in which to do so, at which time the red light will come on in front of me. If you haven't completed your comments, I would ask you to do so. Ms. Whittaker, thank you.
Sure, thank you. So, good morning, McHenry County officials. My name is Jody Whittaker, and I am representing Showing Animals Respect and Kindness, or Shark for short. I'm also speaking today on behalf of the thousands of people who have signed our petition and millions others represented by our endorsement pledges, because we have multiple major organizations supporting a ban on steer tailing in Illinois. As most of you know, the applicant at 1-8316 Kishawaki Valley Road in Woodstock is planning another steer tailing event this Sunday. They're actually selling tickets on Eventbrite. I went last night to try to buy a ticket, and I could have hit Purchase, despite the fact that a memo was sent out in September that a one-year ban has been placed on this property. So, I am wondering if this body has reached out to the applicant. Mr. Wallin has told me that they have been informed, but they're still selling tickets. They're selling tickets at $50 a head. So, if 100 people go, that's $5,000. So, a slap on the wrist is nothing to the people who are putting on these events. They break the law at the events, so they have no problem putting on an event against a ban that's been issued, that's been placed on their property. So, I'm urging the Sheriff's Office to go to Kishawaki Valley Road on Sunday and prevent and deny people from entering the property. There's a ban. It should not happen. Just a reminder of how the last few events went down. On July 12 of this year, an event was put on with no permit, no required permit, no required veterinarian, no required EMT. Animals were shocked with 10,000 volts of electricity. That's illegal. They were hit with a piece of wood. You cannot beat animals in Illinois. On August 16, a steer had his front leg broken. The animal, watching this video, is, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's very hard to watch. His front leg, he could not put his leg down, and he walked around with his front leg up in the air. Additionally, on August 16, four steers were degloved, which means that the hair and the skin from their tail is ripped from the bone. It's very, very painful. They have a lot of nerve endings in their tails. And one steer had either an injured horn or a head and possibly a broken foot. I had a long conversation with Dr. Rachel Kane from Woodstock this Monday, who told me she was at the event on August 16. She also told me that she only went to treat equines, that she was not there to treat bovines. So, as far as we know, those four steers who had degloved tails were never treated. They never got any veterinary care or pain relief. So, the fact that a required veterinarian is necessary in McHenry County is important.
Summarize your comments, please.
Is important, but they must be able to treat both equines and bovines. Bovines are the main animals that are being harmed. So, again, I'm urging the Sheriff's Office to be at the event on Sunday and deny entry. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. Do any members have comments today? Ms. Greeno?
Yes, Jody, I want to thank you for your comments today. Looking historically at this board's position on these events, they were to not happen in McHenry County. And the entire board was unanimous on this just a few years ago. We have been completely silent on it. We have not paid attention to it. I don't think anybody has taken in the scope of what's happening. Years ago, they would also have cockfights at these events. These events also bring in possibly unvaccinated animals, which then can spread disease to our animals, our herds, our stock, you know, our pets in this county. This is just beyond the pale that animals would be treated like this. And as a county board, if we can allow this in our county, then how do we treat people? I mean, animals depend on us. They depend on our protection. And these are just, this is just unbelievable. Nobody wants to sit through the videos of what happens at these events. I guarantee you. But we have to speak as a board. Please open our eyes and ears here and make sure that these stop. The sheriff needs to be there. These laws need to be enforced. The ordinances are already in place, and they need to be enforced. So, I hope everybody is on board with that. Thank you.
I would say that your comments are inaccurate. We have had many discussions about this in the very near or recent future, or recent times. It is our policy to not speak about potential pending investigations, and I'm not prepared to do so in public, but I would be happy to speak with you outside of the boardroom.
Excellent.
Thank you. Move on to new business, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Development and Options presented by our CFO, Carrie Weiss, and Finance Committee Chair, Mike Scala. And Pete, you had a couple words?
Yeah, thank you. It's a big day for our budget process, and this is, I think, the fourth or fifth year in a row that we've kind of used this COW at the end of September to kind of set the table as we move into Finance Committee in October. So, thank you for being here. This is an important discussion. I think you would all agree that Carrie has done a fantastic job with her budget presentations at the August and September COW meetings. And I don't want to talk too much. I want to let her keep her momentum going and just keep the energy happening. I want you to know that the presentation you're about to see, we kind of previewed with Chairman Bueller and Finance Chair Scala, and Pam Althoff helped us as well, and certainly appreciative of their consultation and direction in this presentation. You'll recall that two weeks ago, when we left the September COW meeting, we had about a $3.7 million gap that we're trying to fill. And several of you board members have offered some real good ideas in terms of how to fill that gap, and appreciative of that. Additionally, we've worked with our elected officials and department heads, and they too have been real collaborative in helping us think through some scenarios and solutions to the budget gap that we have. Everything is appreciated. So, we have all the ideas, and the reality is, some budget moves are easier than others. And you're going to see kind of a combination of easier budget moves, and some budget moves are a little more uncomfortable. And that's the reality, some budget moves are more uncomfortable. I'm going to leave you with two points, and then we'll let Carrie talk, and I'll be done. First, at the August COW meeting and at the September COW meeting, we projected a budget that does utilize the 2.9% allowable growth on the tax levy. And I'm confident that we've demonstrated that we need to keep up with inflation, so that is in here. The second, two weeks ago, there was a suggestion, and then I think some resonating interest, that we look at the look-back tool, as we might use that for our levy next year. So, Carrie's going to kind of talk a little bit about that and what that would mean for the financial strength of the organization moving forward. So, we'll have that kind of as a second piece of this discussion. Thank you, Carrie. Take it away.
Okay. All right, thank you, Pete. So, to start, I know you guys have been hearing me all summer, the past couple months, talk a lot about just some of our basic terminology, you know, general funds, special funds, how they relate, how they don't. So, I'm not going to go into that today, because I feel like, you know, we've covered it a lot. But please stop me if you have questions. You know, a lot of this focuses on the general fund, but whenever we're talking about property taxes and we talk about the aggregate extension, that automatically involves those other funds that rely usually more on the property tax. So, just keep that in mind. Please interrupt if you have questions or don't understand something. You know, I like talking about it. So, as Pete said, this is the same exact slide that we saw two weeks ago, and this should be at your desk, because there's a lot of numbers on these slides. So, again, if you have questions, please stop me. Where we're at right now, and the 2.9 and new growth is built in to the top line, the property tax number, leaves us at a 3.7 deficit for the general fund. So, again, two weeks ago, we started talking about some ideas on how we close these gaps. So, we're going to talk about those a little bit more, expand on them, show how they relate to the three-year model, starting with, we're calling them green and yellow. And the reason we're putting them into these categories is, green is really something that we do in every budget process, maybe not the specific examples, but we're always challenging our elected officials and department heads to focus on their positions. How can they do things better, you know, with less or use technology? You know, we talked about fees. We've been talking about the enterprise fund, the overhead allocation, and then transferring interest from our terminal reserve, which IPBC is our insurance co-op, and they maintain a terminal reserve. And so, this is just the interest from that. It's done very well. And then last, you know, again, I said, our department heads and elected officials, specifically in their special revenue funds and their use of them, they're always mindful of the fund balance or future needs of what projects that fund might have to fund. But sometimes too, you know, they grow for whatever reason. So, our recorder analyzes his automation fund and can transfer 242,000, which if you remember, this year we have to pay for a new computer lease rollout, so that'll be some of the offset for that. So, if we take the reductions from these green options, oh, sorry, let me go into this first, expanding on the positions a little bit more, because these top three, we've talked about already. We talked about them two weeks ago. We talked about them during committees. The circuit clerk is eliminating three positions, vacant positions, based on increased use of technology. Probation, we talked about, the state is taking over the pre-trial service, so that's going to be a shift to the state. And then some retirements in county admin and finance. So, you know, we heard you when you said, go back and talk to the department heads, elected officials, and get, see what you can, you know, further the discussion. So, the sheriff, and actually, I made a mistake. This is actually five for the sheriff, so I'm sorry. We had a little, and again, it's not necessarily, so the first three are already built into that 3.7 loss. And these next ones, it's not just we can say, oh, we're going to take these eight positions, and we can cut them out, because some of them are on the vacant list. And, you know, we talk a lot about, we don't budget for all those positions on the vacancy list, but if you can deliver the same service, you know, and maybe instead of three positions, you only have two, that's going to take it off that vacant list. So, it might not affect '26, but it's definitely going to impact how we are doing things in the future. So, the sheriff, health department, and recorder, you know, is kind of a combination of all that. We do have some actual cuts, but then we have some unfunded positions we're removing off of the list. So, does that kind of make sense? Okay. And then, as I said, some of the other ones with the other funds in our reserves. So, if you apply those reductions to our model, that makes our loss for fiscal year '26 just over $2 million. Now, again, we've talked a lot, and we've actually been talking for several years about, you know, '23, '24, '25. We've been kind of on this path, we're sustainable, but we see what is coming in the future. And so, again, fiscal year '26 is still a loss, but a manageable loss. The issue is, you know, as ARPA rolls off and we start to look at our out-years and we limit the ability to increase revenue, is where really the very difficult decisions will start to have to happen. Throughout all these different slides, I want you to focus on this line down here, months of reserve. So, the general fund months of reserve, '23, '24, those were really higher than they needed to be. And coming out of COVID, you know, we had a lot of vacant positions. We had a lot of federal dollars, state dollars coming in for grants. So, the general fund was in a pretty good financial position. And so, the decision was made to have a planned spend-down of that reserve to fund our capital plan. So, again, we're using a one-time revenue with the reserves to fund our one-time capital expenses. So, really, the goal would be to spend this down, which we have been, get to a point, and then see it start to level off. So, really, the challenge is here as we continue to see it to go down. And really, that's in relation to reduce revenue and increasing expenses. Any questions on that? Because remember, too, the budget policy states that the general fund reserve will be at five months, which is fine if we're looking at the general fund just on its own. But when we start to use the general fund reserve as, you know, a safety net for the other funds, specifically FICA and IMRF, then we can't have the general fund reserve be at five months, have FICA be at negative, and have IMRF be at one. So, again, it's focusing on the general fund, but remembering that a lot of these decisions also have impacts on our other funds. Okay, the yellow options. So, this slide is, we put the green options on the top, and then below it are options we labeled as yellow, and that's only because it's, these are not ideal cuts, but they're definitely options. You know, it's nothing mandated. You know, it would require leaning on other funds, you know, more than I think that we should. Cuts to service, the non-union merit, reducing that from three and a quarter to three, which, you know, coming out of COVID, we've worked really hard on keeping our non-union positions within the grade where they need to be. And then some cuts to really programs that have been supported through the general fund for as long as, for a long time.
One time.
Yeah. And then last would be eliminate the county board health insurance, which would impact starting in fiscal '27. So, if you apply the green and the yellow to that model, again, it gets us much closer where we need to be in '26, but still doesn't really address the challenges. So, we'll have to revisit this next year and the year after. And as you can see, even taking green and yellow, we're still at a deficit in the general fund. So, we either need to find additional cuts or use fund balance, which, in the past, it's been, you know, it's not been our recommendation, it's not been the path that the board has chosen to take, where we use a one-time source, like the fund balance, to, for our recurring Any questions so far? Okay, long-term solution. So, Pete mentioned a little bit, the look back. So, what is the look back? I've gotten a lot of questions, like, what does that mean? And so, I took a little blurb out of the tax code, and really, it's just saying, you can take the highest extension from the past three years. So, I like to think of it, so it's the base. So, we talk a lot about, we're taking CPI, we're taking new growth, but you know, what do you take the CPI against? So, that's, we take the base times CPI plus new growth to get our new levy. And so, really, what the three-year look back allows us to do under PTAL is, right now, all the calculations we've been doing is using the 65 million as a base, because that's what we levied last year. So, instead of taking the 65 million as our base, we can take the highest of the past three years, which is the 73.8, and make that our base. So, we can either make it our base and just leave it, we can make it our base and add new growth, we can make it our base and add new growth, and summar all of the CPI. So, it really gives you a lot more options for how, making decisions in the future. Is that everyone? Must have done a good job answering questions prior. So, again, this is just really a visual of that. You know, our base right now is 65, but it can be the 73. Under the PTAL rules, we can't take somewhere in between. We have to make the 73.8 our base. Yes?
So, I understand, do I need to use this?
Lights, please, yes.
Okay. I understand that we have up until next year to take this, because we still have access to the 73.8, because it's only from two years ago. But I'm wondering if everyone on the board feels comfortable that they could explain the look back right now? Is that a unanimous yes? Everybody feels completely comfortable with the look back? You could talk to a constituent and explain this? Okay, so what, then you're going to explain to us the impact of doing this?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just, so say we take the look back this year, and we go back to the 73. So, marching forward, is, and if we had to do a look back three years from now, can we, we're back to this, we can look at the 73? Or how does that step forward?
So, if we were to do the look back this year and go back from 65 to 73, your look back is always an option for you, but it's the highest of the last three years. Well, this would set a new base, as, I mean, as Carrie has said, so that base is, you're never going to have a higher base than that. So, going back three years is really not an option going forward, because it's always going to be at that amount still.
But three years from now, we could, if three years from now, we could do another look back at the 73. Say, say we...
Yeah, but, but you're making, okay, so how do you go, how do you go lower, though? I guess that's the point. The point is, you've established a new base at 73 million, right? And even if the board were to choose going forward, that they're going to keep it at 73 million and not do any new growth and not do any CPI, it'll stay 73 million for the next several years. Well, a three-year look back only goes back to the same number you're already at.
I guess I'm thinking if it was not 73, and you went down next year and the following year, and then it gets to be three or four years out.
You don't have that option. So, when you do, when you do a look back, the tax code states that you have to take the highest of the past three years. You don't have a choice in that manner. So, you have to take the 73 million. We, as a county board, can say that we're taking the 73 million, and then we can abate, meaning give back to the taxpayers some of that 73 million, but our base is still 73 million.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's not my question, Mike.
Okay.
I'm trying to get to where, okay, we look back, we take the 73 million, that's our base.
Yes.
Next year, we decide to do something different, the year after, something different. There's nothing in the look back that says we can only do the look back once every five years or once every...
No, you could, you could do it every year if you wanted to.
Always, so as long as you have that base, you can always look back.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this kind of highlights a little bit of where you're going to. So, this chart I've shown you before, the yellow is what the county has actually taken. The number at the top is what we could have taken under the rules of PTAL. So, the blue is the difference. And so, here was when we did the cut 10, the levy right sizing, so you can see where it went down. So, then if you go out three years, this is where we lost the ability to do the look back to that, you know, pre-cut 10. So, this 73 became our new base. And, you know, I think that was a really important exercise. 83, you know, I guess, looking back now, there was some opportunity to make some right sizing of those levies. But if you look, if you take the 73.9 and make that our new base, our new floor, this next slide, I think this one is really important as far as in this presentation. So, this top number, so the 73.9, if we said, okay, after the cut 10, we're right sizing these levies, this becomes our new base. If you go and you take that new base and you only add inflation to that base, then we can see how that grows based just on inflation. And so, these numbers here, these are the numbers we could use under PTAL. These are what we actually used. And then if you remember, in PTAL, we're capped at 5%. So, the actual inflation, you know, what was affecting our expenses was seven and six and a half. So, if you take, again, this doesn't incorporate what we actually took, new growth, it's just purely how inflation has impacted this over the past five years. We would be here. So, then if you remove mental health, which we took out last year, so let's just say, we right-size the levy, we created a new base, and we've only grown that base with inflation, we would be... we would be at this number here, 74.4. So what we're proposing under the look back is not taking any additional CPI or new growth, which we could if, if you chose to, spreading that out amongst the levies, specifically addressing the issues we're having in IMRF and FICA. So propping this one up, you remember FICA still is having trouble making payroll and it's also in debt to the general fund by about, almost 4 million. Moving this up to meet our current and future needs, we can be under that 74 million. So really, I think what this demonstrates is every year, we're looking at cuts and how we can do things better. But at some point, the inflation is just, you know, there's only so much we can cut when we have, you know, expenses increasing by 7%, 6%. And so utilizing the look back tool here is really just reacting to inflation and making sure we're resetting that floor to be successful going forward. Set.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I, I just, excuse me, I want to make sure I hear what you said. The 73 million, well, 74, that does not include the 2.9% or new growth. That's just current tax rates on the new floor.
The 73.8?
Yes.
That is utilizing the look back, so that was our extension two years ago.
Right, but there's.
No, I mean, you, you could, if you wanted to add new growth and two point, or whatever percent of CPI up to 2.9, you could also do that.
What would that number look like then? If it was look back plus 2.9% plus new growth?
About 76.8.
Okay, so almost $3 million more. Okay, thank you.
Yes. So again, it's, it's, you know, opposite of what we started this discussion, we take 2.9 on 65, so we have a lower CPI from last year on a lower number. So if we increase the base, that's where that extra million really is we're generating with CPI. Because I think, I think it's important, you know, we, I actually did this exercise because, you know, why is the general fund growing? Where is it growing? Is it because of resolutions that were passed? Is it new mandates or unfunded mandates? And so I think seeing that even through this period of high inflation, you know, where in theory, based on our new floor, we're still coming in under, I think really shows that when, even if you're growing, but you're growing by less than inflation, that's still reducing.
So I think one of the things that the board has tried to be very conscious of is the fact that allowing options for future boards, when some of us may not be sitting here, you know, two, four, five, 10 years in the future. And so, you know, going to your question, John, about can we still add CPI and new growth? Yes. So the, the nice part about that, if we were to take that option, is you can still abate back to the taxpayers. You can abate back whatever amount you want. What that is doing is reserving that space for future needs going forward. You, you, you know, I would never recommend that we take anything more from the taxpayers than we absolutely positively need. And so through an abatement, you're able to do that because you're able to then, as a board collectively say, we don't want to take this money, we still want to make these cuts, we still want to have this amount of money that we need in order to run an efficient county. But you're giving future boards the option then to be able to have access to those dollars, which is really the problem that we're running into right now, which is that we don't have access to it. We, there's, right now, without a look back, the only thing we can control is our expenses. The revenue stream is limited by basically PTAL. And because our base is lower based on what we have done in the past, we can only generate so much new revenue. And as, as Karius pointed out with that previous slide, the problem really isn't our spending because we're actually spending below what inflation would have, you know, basically gotten us into already. So we're already a million, 1.2 million below what inflation has caused for us. So it's really not, that, that slide is important because it's showing that as a county, all of the staff are doing a great job of keeping things, expenses below what even inflation is, that everyone else has been experiencing. So it's really not an expenditure side, it's a revenue side problem in this model. So when you look at that truly, it gives that option open for the future years for the board.
Mr. Hendrix?
On that previous slide, remember, Skylar, you said that you can abate, you know, whatever amount we don't need.
Right.
But the slide said we can abate 1 million. What's, I guess I just have confusion on that. Can we abate whatever we want or is it capped at 1 million?
No, you can abate whatever you want.
Okay.
It, that's the proposal. That's, that's what staff's proposal is, is because we, because they're saying with, go back to the slide where you had the, this one. So they're saying that, you know, because of that look back, we don't need all that money. And so they're basically trying to right-size the different levies here in order to make them healthy again. And they're coming up with basically a million dollars that they don't need. And so again, focus has always been, don't, don't tax the taxpayers more than we absolutely have to. And so they're saying in next fiscal year, we could give a million dollars back.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
So to Eric's point and add, on the abatement and, and this look back, taking the look back, it still includes, I'm looking for the page, it still includes the 17 positions being cut.
Correct.
Not keeping those positions, they're still being cut.
It's doing all.
Just wanted to make sure we understood that.
It, it's just for clarification purposes. So if we were to do the look back and do this, all of the items in the green are an assumption that that would all happen. The items in the yellow would not happen unless board-directed staff to do those items in the yellow.
Okay, thank you, I, I understand. I just wanted to.
Yep.
Clarify that point.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. So quoting Meghan Trainor, it's really all about the base, right?
All about the base, about the base.
Getting that base to a number that makes sense.
That could be your walk-up song if you wanted to be.
Yeah. Did you say Meghan Trainor? To, I just lost my thought. So i, i, if we take the, if we take the look back plus the 2.9 and new growth, that establishes a new base, that moving forward provides us a lot of options.
It does.
Through abatements, we can do abatements every year to bring that number back down to what we want it to be, but it always gives us a flexibility. God forbid something terrible happens, so we, we have room to maneuver that. We're now a kind of a, you know, the last couple of years, the backs have been against the wall trying to figure out, rob Peter to pay Paul, move this, borrowing money to, you know, to, to the social security, IMRF fund and things like that. So that gives us plenty of options going forward.
That is a true statement.
Okay, thank you.
To kind of expand on that, that really just establishes a new base. It's not like a huge inflow. So we will also have to consider, and I guess that would be options as we move out, you know, where we're at next year, what number we're using as our base, if we would take CPI or not take CPI as well. So it's not, it's not like, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where we use the look back, bump it up, you know, and then get behind, and then use the look back, bump it up, and then get behind again, does that?
Mr. Short?
Real quick, does the expense side of it include both the green and the yellow options or just the green options or just the staff cuts?
So you're talking about on this slide?
Yes.
So this slide utilizes the look back and the green only.
Okay.
Nothing from the yellow. You, you know, it's hard because there's so many different scenarios, but really, if, if there's something on the yellow that you think, you know, we should be incorporating, whatever we add from the yellow, we would just abate.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hendrix?
Sorry, just two quick follow-ups. One, the, the elimination of some of the general fund positions. You said the circuit clerk, probation and county admin slash finance positions were already built in, correct?
Correct.
But the, are the sheriff, health recorder positions already built in?
So that's what I was saying, so yes-ish, right?
Okay.
So on this green, it shows 245,000. So we look at the vacancy list and as I said, we don't always budget for every position on the vacancy list. So to answer your question, some of those eliminated positions are just coming off the vacancy list, but we never had them included in the budget anyway because, you know, when you have 1,300 positions, we always have to assume that there's going to be some vacancies, but it's very difficult to make them one-to-one. So we usually do like a pool. So some of these positions, so like the recorder position, actually all three of them, it's a portion of this 244.
That equates to about three FTE full-time that are taken out. That wasn't already pre-budgeted.
Okay, so it would be additional?
Correct.
Okay. And then?
But the positions are being removed, yes. So if they're currently vacant but unfunded, they're coming off the roster. So it's not necessarily going to impact 26, but it will impact operations moving forward. So really, the commitment by these electors and department heads is we're reviewing our list, you know, position that's been open for a while, you know, how have you been functioning without it? So they really did a deep dive into reevaluating some of that and then removing them off the list. So they can't be filled in the future.
And would, were the departments consult, like is this the department's suggestion that they proposed? Is this our suggestion?
We worked with the department, yes.
Okay.
They're not surprised to see it on the list if that's what you're asking. I hope.
Okay, that's it.
Mr. Collins?
On that slide you're showing the, the hard stuff at the bottom, why is moving squad car replaced with RTA considered hard?
So, well, I don't mean to take your thunder, Pete. Well, so it's hard because you're, so we can, we can use RTA for safety and roads, right? So the board has usually taken a position that we're not using RTA funds to do anything but roads. So you can do that, but squad cars are a reoccurring expense every single year, right? So by doing that, you're now either, as a board, setting a precedence and saying, every single year, we're going to do that because we have to still replace squad cars every single year. But any amount of money we take out of roads is now meaning that we can't do whatever, take whatever project out of all the projects that are in our five-year plan, we can no longer do. Because if you're making that decision, you're saying a half a million's coming out of some project every single year. So that, so it's, difficult is relative, right? You're making choices.
Sure.
You're making choices that transportation now has more or less, I should say, dollars to be able to spread over whatever projects they're doing. And that, I don't want to say is it, it's a difficult decision because that's a policy decision that the board has chosen in the past that they didn't want to do.
How much is in the RTA fund now, you know?
I have no clue. Do you guys know?
It was, it's projected at least the 2026 budgeted revenues, and Washington says it's 38.9 million, and then 2025 was 26. 2026 projected revenues is 38.9 million from the RTA and then 2025 appropriated, appropriated revenues is 26.1 million.
And then you've got the.
You wanted the fund balance?
Yeah.
So again, remember, fund balance is relative to the projects that are.
Agreed.
So I, I caution with using just that number, but.
I mean, you know how much of that's been allocated so far or will be allocated?
Well.
Then you have the motor vehicle tax fund as well, that's growing.
Yeah. Again, it comes back to, the board can make policy decisions about where we're spending our money when it comes to transportation, right? And we, you know, have been, transportation committee has been having a lot of discussions about how, not only how the fund revenue is coming in, but where we're expensing it out. So we had a whole discussion, I think last month, about the fact that the reimbursement for bridges is currently nonexistent. So, you know, everything that's in the pipeline is fine, but new bridges would come at 100% cost, not at the 80% that it normally does from federal dollars. So.
Is that because we're not getting the 20, the match anymore from the fund?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, John, you asked a really good question. Why is this a difficult decision? There's several reasons. And, and again, we could do it, but the RTA funds have been in jeopardy, if you will, as we're looking at what the new regional transportation language looks at. We've been proud to say to our legislators that there's only two counties that are using RTA dollars exclusively for transportation. It's us and Lake. So this would be a shift in that position. You also see the next line there is moving more bridge money out. So effectively, if we took this next difficult decision, we're basically saying we're only going to, we're not going to fund bridges anymore with, with the bridge levy or the matching levy, it's going to be just RTA. And again, RT money's new, the bridge money's kind of an old tool, but you know, it's, 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 it's not just 500,000 for the squads. If we did the next one, it's, it's almost a million of, of RTA money that's now being used for, or being lost or, well, it's a half million for RTA money, but then we're taking another chunk of transportation money out. So it's a million dollars of transportation money to prop up the rest of the budget.
If I could just chime in for a minute, I think we should be very, very cautious about using RTA funds for public safety reasons. Other counties have, have dipped into their RTA funds in a, in a big way to fund public safety, but not knowing where the RTA is going and, and the legislation is going to be coming within the next couple of months in Springfield, we're taking a pretty big gamble on, on spending those funds in other areas if we don't know that all those funds are going to be there.
All very valid points. I just want to make sure I understood why it was hard. So, okay. Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so this takes the green options plus the look back. And this one in your packet is actually the look back, look back with a million dollar abatement. But again, there's a lot of different options. If you wanted to take the look back plus new growth and CPI and abate 4 million, you know, that's an option, abate nothing and just use the new base. You know, I think these are discussions for finance?
Oh, no, we're going to have those today.
Okay. So what this does is not only brings fiscal year 26 to a positive, but if you look specifically in the out years. So what I did with the look back is there was $2 million in 26 that we added to FICA. So it can start to grow faster, pay back its debt. So in the out years, specifically in 27, when we start to see the impacts of what we have to bring over from ARPA, that 2 million shifts from FICA back to the general fund. So that's why it looks like the, the top line for property tax in the general fund is growing. So really, it's just putting a lot in this year, but then knowing that some of that's going to have to come back. And again, that, that, that's back to the discussion of having options in the future to be able to react to the health of these funds, including the general fund. But really what this option, if you look down here to the months of reserve, this is where we start to see it level off. So if you know under the other scenarios, we. So, if you know under the other scenarios we presented, we still see that start to decline. But really, using the lookback, as I said, you're just resetting things. And so, that's where you can see that down here in this, where we start to reset it.
And just again, scenario hasn't changed, but just to reiterate, this still takes allowable new growth and CPI in these out years. So, this model still shows that the board is committed to taking CPI and new growth in future years. So, just FYI, I mean, again, a decision that future boards would make. But when you start looking at these numbers here, you're still adding those, those revenue streams into this equation.
Mr. Kearns?
And Mike, that changed since you're taking in this model for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. It's, it's still sliding backwards, taking the CPI and new growth each year. If we were to do a flat over the next three years after this, that would be significantly lower, right, by twenty-nine?
Correct.
That number would be, what do you, what do you think?
Uh, probably four million. By twenty-nine, you'd probably be looking at about a four-million-dollar hole.
Okay. Thanks. It's important to note what you guys are thinking.
You guys? How about you yourself?
Well, I'm thinking, that's why I asked.
All y'alls. How about that?
Okay, so in summary, I think the green options that came from department heads, elected officials from the county board, really demonstrates that we're always looking at this stuff. We're always, you know, thinking on how we can do things better. The yellow option is, again, not the preferred recommendations, but it cuts services. And then I guess that becomes for you guys to decide the importance to your constituents. Using the lookback really just gives us a tool to go back and capture what we've lost due to inflation. You know, again, resetting that base. So, all these discussions we've been having all summer, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we really didn't go too much into capital and supplementals. So, as I said earlier, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, as a planned spend-down of that general fund reserve, the capital plan was really fully funded. So, if you see the list, it's not a huge list. And again, I think there's going to be a lot of decision points regarding that list. And same with some of the things on supplemental, you know, where does the board want to go with the AI initiative or other projects like that? So, again, by taking the green and the lookback, that really gives us the opportunity to fund any of these capital projects that you choose to and also the supplementals. But one thing too, to point out on our tiny supplemental list, it's per policy that any change to a position, whether it's regraded, changed the name, has to have board approval. So, that's why you see up here, some of these reclasses have a negative. And that's because, again, we're working on reclasses all the time and a better way to provide things. So, here is one that was presented to committee that shows a reduction. And then the non-personnel is below it. And some of those are not recurring. So, again, an option for that could be fund balance as well. That's it.
So, again, you have this, you have this large spreadsheet. And as in the past, administration has ranked them, one and two, so that, you know, you know what their recommendations are in regard to all of the requests that had come in through all the different committees. So, you see the, the total for general fund and then non-general fund recommendations for different positions and other budget stuff, I guess. So, again, none of these are baked into our current budget. So, if these are items, if you want to take the recommendation from staff to do all the item number ones, then that's money that we have to find in order to do those because they're not currently in here. When you talk about the, the different capital projects, again, we have a revenue stream for our capital projects that we're trying to utilize one-time revenues for. A lot of that is being funded through the revenue from the jail contract that we have because that's what we have made a, a statement that we'll only use that money for one-time revenue issues. So, again, looking in out years, not to be a Debbie Downer, but if that contract goes away, that's a revenue stream that also goes away, which means we now have to fund capital projects through some other means. So, again, just as an FYI to the board, that's, you know, what we're using those dollars for, and if it goes away at some point, we got to replace it. Go ahead, yeah.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, I just had a quick question and just high-level, just a recap. The green option, no growth in CPI, just the reductions that are recommendate, recommended? Is that right? It's, I heard somebody say that, so I'm not?
Run that one by me again.
So, the green is, is CPI and new growth and the reductions or?
So, the green takes the base that we started on on the first slide, the three-point-seven loss. So, that three-point-seven loss already assumes taking new growth and CPI on the base of sixty-five million.
That's what I thought.
So, then the green just reduces that loss to about two million.
No, I know that, but I'm, I was trying to, so, right, so that does include the, okay, that's right. And then the yellow is all of that with the additional reductions?
So, yellow, yeah, is the three-point-seven, and then that gets a little better from the green options?
Because you have more reductions?
Yes.
All right. And then the green option with lookback does not include, that's what's being said. So, not including, it's going to do the lookback, but not new growth and CPI?
That's what's presented on your slides, but again?
No, I know, I'm just saying what's presented here.
Correct. It is, just the lookback from, so seventy-three point eight is our new base.
Okay, right. Using that as a new base. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Short?
I, I think I heard it. The wheels are spinning and they squeak a little bit, so I just want to make sure. This, this is not included in green option with lookback?
Correct. We don't ever include the supplementals until, so, so we have our recommendations of what we think should be included, but then ultimately, if there's something you want moved from a two to a one or a one to a two, then you have to give us, let us have that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
On the large sheet for supplementals on the back side, the Valley High Nursing Home, those do not affect the budget, correct? Those, those affect?
Well, they affect the total budget, but they're specific just to Valley High. So, the, we kind of?
They're not in the Valley High fund.
Correct, yes.
Right.
All the special revenue funds that are listed would only affect those individual funds. That's why we don't, we don't really have them ranked because they're not technically competing for general fund dollars. They have their own identified source of revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gattabaler?
Yes, what I'm interested in is how much are we abating back? And?
Huh? The suggestion was a million.
Yeah, if, if we're only, if we're only abating back a million dollars, then what we're doing is taking last year's budget and increasing it by how many million then? I mean, I see the seventy-three million, but last year, we didn't wait, we didn't take seventy-three million. So, what's the difference between those two numbers?
About five million. So, if we take the sixty-five with the base and add new growth and CPI, that gets us to around sixty-seven.
Okay, but we're taking seventy-three entirely, and we're going to give them a million back.
Right, so then we would be collecting seventy-two point eight.
So, we're going from sixty-three to seventy-two?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty, no, sixty-seven's with the new growth and the other.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five to seventy-three, or seventy-two. Okay, so it's a seven-million-dollar increase that we have to explain to our taxpayers. Okay.
Okay, so where do we go from here? So, next up on the docket is finance. And finance has to have a discussion and recommend something to the full board. Then that goes to the committee, the hole where it goes for thirty-day review. After it's on thirty-day review in November, then we actually vote on it. So, discussion today needs to focus around what's coming to finance. And I, I need direction from the full board. I do not want to have a situation where finance makes a recommendation to the full board and the full board doesn't support whatever that recommendation is. That gets us into the same cluster that we've had for the last several years that everyone has agreed we're trying to avoid. So, I need some direction from the board here today as to what we're doing and what we're doing going forward so that finance can have a further discussion, but ultimately recommend something that this board's going to support. Because there's no sense in finance spending time discussing that the board's not going to support. That's counterproductive to what we're all trying to achieve. So, I think the, the question for me comes back to, when you go back to your sheets, I'm going to move this over here real quick. And if the board does not want to do the lookback, then we have a gap of about six, six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars roughly still that we have to try and close for just this year. Huh?
With the yellow?
With the yellow options included. So, maybe you can throw that screen up just so that we can have a, a full discussion here. Six-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So, this is, so, again, this is making an assumption that we're taking all the green options, which, which I think we're all in agreement we should do. Also, taking all of the yellow options, of which I have a hard time with some of them. And we're still short. So, the only other place we can move from is personnel. So, we've said already that a full-time FTE here in the county average loaded is about eighty-five thousand. So, you're looking at needing to eliminate potentially another seven, eight more positions somehow, some way. Again, that comes back to the board. What programs are we, where are we eliminating that from? So, again, we could choose any department where we're eliminating them from. But again, that's a policy decision about what service are we reducing to, you know, and I'm just going to pick on, you know, P and D. So, does that mean that permitting, instead of taking two weeks, now takes three weeks? Is it transportation where, you know, instead of pruning the roads every, whatever schedule they do or plowing them every schedule, that gets reduced? Or we don't, you know, repair roads as much? Or, I mean, so, these are all the policy discussions about what, as a board, you feel we want to do that at. If there is support to do the lookback, then that's a whole different discussion about what do we do with the lookback? And so, I, I kind of feel like we're at, to me, it's which option are we choosing? Because if we're choosing this first path, that's fine. Then we need to have further discussion about where we're going to try and eliminate positions from. If there's a majority of the board that is willing to do the lookback, then I think we move on to that discussion and then try and figure out what we're doing with the lookback. So, that's kind of where I'm at as far as a, a breakpoint here as to just where we're going.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. You know, for the last several years, you guys have stood up here and have projected out the train coming down the tracks. And every year, we've kind of scrambled around and looked around and found everything we can to, to get everything balanced out with, to your point, a lot of times in November, coming down at the last minute, you know, bouncing around a bunch of things. And that gets to be a difficult exercise every single year. And I think it's incumbent upon us as public officials that we have to be fiscally responsible to the county and to the citizens and keep taxes as low as possible. But to the point you made earlier, Carrie, that from an inflationary standpoint, we've done that work. We've kept our spending below inflation. And through the work of administration and all the elected public officials have worked very, very hard to find every dollar they can in savings. But at some point, you could be back against, against the wall. And it's time for a very difficult decision to be made. And I think, for me, what makes the most sense from a fiscally responsible standpoint is to take the lookback plus the two-point-nine percent and new growth. And then abate back what we don't need to have. So, we're not, it's just taxing for the sake of taxing. But we're creating a base for ourselves that for future years out gives us the ability to maneuver. Because we don't know what the future's going to look like. You know, we don't know if inflation's going to grow, we don't know inflation's not going to grow. I mean, you know, all the experts in the world can say what they want, but nobody really, really knows. So, I think doing tho, doing that puts the county in very financially stable. Still difficult a couple of years out, but gives us something, something to manage to and work for. And I just think that if we're going to do a lookback, taking the two-point-nine and the new growth, while difficult, you're in it, you might as well get it in and get it over with and, and then sit down and work to explain to people why we're doing what we're doing. But I think the abatement gives us the opportunity to take that and explain to our constituents why we're doing it, and they're not going to take the fall out. But it gives us a base to work from in the future. That's my opinion.
Ms. Greenow?
So, I need to take a little look back to the conversations earlier months ago. And I just wanted, and I actually had three different things, so this is just number one. Initially, there was a survey, and out of the survey came a three percent cut, a no-growth, no CPI, and then different scenarios from there. And so, the expectation that I had would that be that we would be getting the budget scenarios in each of these balanced with what we would be giving up? What would go away if we had a three percent cut? What would go away if we had no growth? So that we were balanced. And we basically said, we're going to put on a new train track and not keep going down the train track where we're not making the cuts. We just continue to grow, continue to grow on that. So, was there a reason that it was never presented in that fashion?
I think because of this, all the meetings that we've had, the scenarios about where we're cutting, you know, we, we, I'll, I'll say myself, I asked, you know, board members, that policy decision, where are we cutting at? That's, that's not staff's responsibility, that's board member's responsibility as to where we're cutting. So, most of those scenarios, as you can see now, when we have the budget all rolled up, shows that we have to cut stuff, people, from some place. And so, again, that's the discussion that I keep on bringing back to the board. What, policy-wise, where do you want to make those cuts at? And we put everything up on the board that board members came up with.
So, the department heads would have that responsibility. No one on this board is qualified to go in and say, what would be the impact of three percent cut across all of the departments in this county? But anyway, so basically, you decided that this would be put back. Because that's what's happened the last two years, is that it comes back to the board where you want to cut. And what I thought the board had made clear is show us the scenarios of what we would be giving up, you know, to the departments under these scenarios.
So, how, how does the staff, and I'm just saying staff in general, how does the staff know what we as a board collectively are willing to do policy-wise? How do they read our minds? How do they read our minds to know that?
Can you clarify that? How would the, how would the department heads read our mind when they received a director, a direct, a directive to give a balanced budget?
No, what I'm saying-
Under these different scenarios? And then let the board look at that so that they could make an informed decision on what services we would be providing under different scenarios?
What I'm saying is that staff is supposed to provide a service, depending on which department it is, at the best of their abilities based on the resources they're given. Can we agree on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, if the board, through our actions, choose to change that level of service because of cuts, how is staff supposed to come back and recommend something that they don't know what the board wants? So, if, if the board, and I'm just, pick a department, the sheriff's department, let's say. If the board says we need to make cuts, how is the sheriff's department supposed to know that that means that we are making cuts to some service in order to meet that need and expectation?
Well, they would say, okay, we have these scenarios. This is what would have to be cut under a three percent cut. This is what would have to be cut at a no growth, no CPI. This would have to, this is where we would be, and this is what it would take for us to maintain. And then bring those scenarios back, and then have that as a whole, and then the board could see specifically what, what choices we would be made, which was what we did ask for. So, I'm, I mean, I know we don't go into each of their departments and tell them and dictate to them how to do their jobs. So, this is just a, it's just a continuation. This is actually a continuation of the last two years. So, we can't do the department heads' jobs. I'll leave that at that, to be contemplated, and other people probably have input on that. I'll just jump to number three and then back to number two. In the, the, one of the yellow examples, someone had proposed cutting county board health insurance. It would have more impact, just from an HR payroll burden, for anyone who wanted to continue to have health insurance, to say, deduct, deduct the health insurance from my base pay. And then we wouldn't have to pay payroll burden on the base pay, they'd still have access to the health insurance, it would be, for those who wanted it, and other people would still have their income. I mean, so, some of these ideas, although, you know, maybe a, a first glance at it, but, but there's better ways to get more money out of it, is all I'm saying. And I don't know if this number was based on all eighteen people taking, you know, it was the actual bill that it's costing us for the medical insurance. But I'm just saying, you know, that option is something that would actually have a bigger impact than that, that number. And there's probably other things in here that, you know, might be able to have a, a better impact, so. But then, lastly, but actually first, the lookback. What impact is that actually going to have on the tax bill to the taxpayer?
So, that's what we were, Joe asked that question, and the answer was about, we'd be taxing an additional about five million dollars next year.
Dollars?
Huh?
The fifty-nine dollars per three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
Oh, are you, I s- Go on.
Do you mean, to the average homeowner?
Yes.
So, if you look at about a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand market value house in a municipality, the impact would be an additional, just under sixty dollars per year. And again, that's average, there's a lot of different factors, but it's just to kind of get an idea, because when you hear, you know, seventy-three million, five million, sixty-five million, you know, putting it down to the impact, not to minimize any impact, but you know, protection of future services, that would be the cost, about just under sixty.
Thank you.
Ms. Althoff?
I don't know. So, actually, I first want to thank staff and all the department heads and our constitutional officers, because I think that they've worked extraordinarily hard, from what I've seen from my seat, in attempting to address our concerns about increasing costs. I think they've done that. And that's my response. I believe that they heard the conversation that was had at this board for the scenarios. And when they came, at least in the committees that I serve on, they came and they presented their budgets and said, this is mandated, this is supplemental, this is what can be eliminated. And we had those conversations, and I kept saying over and over again, this is where we have the conversation about what you want to eliminate, to direct to staff, where to go from here. Those were included, thank you, those were included on the lists. There were no others. We asked board members, what do you think? Where do you want to go? Mr. Austin started our conversation about budgets, that one of the places that ultimately you end up is cutting staff, cutting personnel. We've submitted many suggestions about where to cut. I think we also have to seriously consider excellent basic services, which is what government exists for, is to provide those services that are required by law and to provide them well. And I do believe that the department heads, as well as every single constitutional officer, provided us with options for us to tell them what you want to eliminate. And, and that's where we are. You heard them, we have them. So, I don't know if, if you wanted to do the, the scenarios of three percent, that seemed, that conversation changed, in my estimation, at every committee that I sat on, we had people say, well, maybe not a three percent reduction. And I think we took that from committee and provided that direction to staff. And, and Ms. Greeno, so you do know, I, I think your, your suggestions about health insurance, we have had that conversation. I don't believe that you were serving on the board then, so you wouldn't know that, but we did exactly that, and that certainly is an option, is that it can be reduced from, you know, basic salary. It was never to refuse coverage to any of the county board members. It was about the cost. So, I, I, I thank you for that, bringing that back to our attention. And, and then again, with regard to the conversations, if you'll remember, we started this, and I thank you again, Terry, we started this earlier, and, and we've had significantly more in-depth conversations about where the expenses are, why the revenues went down, why expensive, expenses have gone up. We had this. I, I don't know how much more information this board could receive from staff and from our electeds. It's in front of us. Now, we have to make the difficult decisions about where to go and to direct them. I mean, I, I can't tell you how many hours I've spent individually, as well as with staff, to come up with options and suggestions. They're here. So, where do we want to go? What do you want to eliminate if you want to reduce this? And if you don't want to look back? I think that's what Michael's asking for at this time. What's the direction? Where are the policymakers here? So, I would just say, we need to have a serious conversation right now, here, to give better direction on how we want to handle this. And I think we are at a crossroads. We either want to solve this issue so that next year we're not having the same conversation, and we solve it now, or you kick the can down the road, which I'm very familiar with having come from Springfield, and we do nothing, and just kind of try and balance this year's budget and worry about it next year. And I don't think that that's fair. So, you know, you opened the conversation, there's several suggestions up there. We talked about many, and I'm gonna use law and government. We talked about what was not mandated. The social work program, which I think is one of the best things that we've done over the past several years, it's not required, that's an expense. What do you want to do? Want to keep it? Want to take it away? Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks?
Thank you. So, since I've been on the board, I mean, I, I am frustrated. You know, since I've been on the board, we've increased the motor fuel tax, you know, from, what was it, four-point-eight cents a gallon or, or what, what have you, to eight cents? So, sixty-six percent increase there. You know, recently, we essentially offshored the property tax levy for the mental health board, based on the promise that we're gonna take a ten-and-a-half million dollar property tax levy reduction, and, and switch it over to sales tax. And, and we asked the constituents to essentially trust us on that, right? There was nothing that actually bound us to do it. And, and now here we are, talking about a lookback to, to go back to the exact same thing. So, I, you know, I can appreciate the, I, I guess, the point that's been made that, you know, well, you know, theoretically, if we wouldn't have reduced the levy, or if we would have taken the same property, or the, the highest property tax levy in prior years, we, you know, really were just kind of where we're at now if we go lookback. But, I mean, we literally all sat here, talked about how we're gonna reduce the property tax levy, that we were gonna switch it to a sales tax, that we thought that would be more fair, it would be good for the mental health board, it'd be good for everybody. And now we're saying, oopsie-daisy, one year later, let's just stack it back up again. Just kidding, we did it for one year, and we don't like it anymore, because we have hard decisions to make, or harder decisions to make. I'd like, you know, frankly, it's, well, it's just a, it's a break of a promise to the voters when we put it on the ballot and asked them, you know, would they support it if we did this? And now we're not, or at least we're considering not. As far as, there were, there was earlier comments about, you know, how is staff supposed to know? You know, I, I think that should have been done, frankly, at a, at a higher administrative level. I mean, just like, how, how could it have been done? I think, just like, we have the green option and the yellow option, I think there could have been additional alternative options that were presented, and I, I thought that's what was gonna happen. I would, I'm strongly opposed to breaking our promise to our voters and saying, we're just going to, you know, tack on the property tax levy that we promised we'd get rid of through a sales tax. And what we're really talking about, frankly, is, you know, approximately a ten-and-a-half million dollar sa, tax increase, because we're saying, we're gonna raise the property tax levy back up to what it was, even though we're not spending ten-and-a-half million a year, roughly, on the mental health board anymore. But that sales tax is still gonna exist out there, as will the, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy percent increase, the motor fuel tax. I, I, I think that's ridiculous. I, I would be strongly opposed to the lookback. I, I, I think it's frankly, if we do that, I think this board just lied to the voters when we were contemplating that. And I, I would like to see a harder path presented for at least the, the six-hundred-thousand that we're saying, if we take all the yellow, all the green, we're still roughly six-hundred-thousand dollars short. And I, I don't understand, are we really saying that there's not additional hard decisions we can make for six-hundred-thousand? Whether that's personnel, whether that's, you know, program spending, what have you? I, I don't know. I'm, I'll end my comment with that, but I am opposed to lookback. I think that would be a gross disservice to the county. I appreciate the, you know, financial, I guess, predicament we're in, but, my goodness.
Mr. Shorten?
The budget drives the property taxes. And I, I appreciate Member Greeno's comments about the perspective of, of having the department heads come to us and present to us where they think they would cut. And I, I had had that thought in previous years, but when I, anytime I look at something, I tend to flip it on its head, and if a department came to us and said, we want to increase our spending, we would ask the question, what do you want to spend it on? Ask for a million dollars. We're not just gonna give you a million dollars, you gotta define what it is. So, while th, this lookback option is, is, I'm not in favor of it. I don't like it, I don't want to do it, but I'm having a hard time seeing where the cuts are that, that I would be comfortable with, and a majority of our residents in our county would be comfortable with. And again, the ask here from us is, if we're going to cut, what are we going to cut? And I'm open to those suggestions. On a broader perspective, you know, I, I do want to acknowledge the, the work of, of previous boards, previous department heads, previous countywide elected officials. And I've said this in, in committee meetings, and I don't know if I've said it in a full committee, or a full board meeting, but if you, you take a look at that chart, I probably have, because, Carrie, you presented that chart, that shows pretty much reflected down over the past ten years. If you had actually applied the full CPI and added another, let's call it red level, we would be up about forty-two percent. And I, I took it back twenty years, and non-scientific, but I think directionally correct. I pulled my property tax bill from two thousand and five, which was the first year that we were in our house the full year, and got the full weight of levies applied to us. My, my personal property tax bill, and I grant you, there are assessments that have changed over the years and, and factors, but not in, in a large measure. My tax bill's grown from fifty-eight-hundred dollars to nine-thousand dollars a year, in, in the most recent year. The aggregate CPI between two thousand and five and two thousand and twenty-five is about, is sixty-six percent. And I pulled that from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, so I'm gonna deem it semi-reliable. As I looked through the taxing districts, the top two, obviously school districts, District Forty-Seven has seen a change of sixty-one-point-five percent. School District One-Fifty-Five has increased fifty-six percent. City of Crystal Lake, which is home rule, so they're not capped by PTEL, they're, my portion of the property tax bill has increased a hundred and, almost a hundred and eleven percent. I'm gonna skip over counting. Park District, fifty-five percent. Let's see. Crystal Lake Library, sixty percent, and I'm not cherry picking here, I'm just having trouble looking on my screen. I'll give credit to MCC, they're only up seventeen percent. Nunde Township, Road and Bridge, up thirteen percent. Nunde Township itself, up six-point-seven-six percent. Conservation District, up sixty-two percent. Cemetery, granted, it's from a dollar to a dollar forty-seven, is up forty-seven percent. The county, as of two thousand and five, is down two-point-nine-seven percent. And it just speaks to the work that's been done here in the long term to control spending and, and for control the property tax budget, I'm sorry, the property tax levy. If you extend it, we're looking at a budget that's what, two-hundred-and-seventy-million-ish?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-two this year.
Yeah. And we, we have a lot of money that flows into the county from state and federal grants. So, I took a look at what the state and what the federal government has done in the past twenty years. The federal debt in two thousand and five was eight-point-one-three trillion dollars. Today, it's just at about thirty, thirty-seven trillion, a three-hundred-and-fifty-five percent increase. Total state debt, included bonded and unfunded pension debt, has jumped from eighty-five billion to a hundred-and-eighty-three billion, a hundred-and-sixteen percent increase. The debt per citizen for the US population is about a hundred and, almost a hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars today versus only twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred in two thousand and five. And Illinois debt per citizen has gone from six-thousands, six-hundred dollars to almost just over fourteen-thousand dollars per person. So, we don't have any debt. And I asked Scott to put together quick, and he did, thank you for that, how much debt we could accumulate- how much debt we could accumulate, because the other option is, we can cut, which, again, if we're going to cut, we need to know where the cuts are going to come from. And that's got to come from us. If we're not going to raise the levy, then we could incur debt. Now, I wouldn't recommend incurring debt for operations, but our, our debt limit per state statute, I'm assuming, is close to three hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. Now, I'm not recommending it, but it's the other path that we could go on. So again, I'm, I'm sick to my stomach about this. I, I totally understand Member Hendricks' comments. I don't think we lied to the people of the county. And, and I never had any intent when we put that referendum on the ballot to come back at a later date and change it, but we're not growing government, we're dealing with the cost of doing business. And if the cost of doing business is too high, then we have to cut. I, I don't know which programs I would cut at this point, but again, I'm open to suggestions and entertaining those today.
Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mr. Shorten. I really did appreciate all that work that you did on that, because I think that was pretty outstanding. My tax bill went down for the county at a hundred and forty-five dollars last year. You know, for the county, my county portion. My tax bill still went up considerably. Every person I've ever spoke to, I mean, one hundred percent, have always said, "What are you guys doing for me? Because you've raised my taxes every year." They all say it, because it's an education problem that we don't, you know, people don't understand it. I think I entered the board, I think it was two thousand and sixteen. And we, we have cut, cut flat levy, you know, almost every year. And we've, we've lowered this, the tax levy. What, what I'm trying to get at here is, I've always preached for anyone who's been around here long enough, which several of you are, that you're going to make cuts to the levy, and a flat levy, it has to be sustainable. And they've never been sustainable, because we've never made the cuts along with the cut of the tax levy. But for good reason, we haven't been able to make those cuts, because we, we cut staff along the way. There was, I mean, I think there was fifteen hundred positions that were accounted for when, when I started, and now, what is it, Pete, twelve hundred? It's around twelve hundred. So, in that respect, the county has cut along that staffing and everything else. I'm not sure how much more the county can bleed, and I have to say, this is, it has approached severe unsustainability, and partly because of the, mainly because of the inflation over the last, you know, four years. That seven, eight percent inflation that you showed up there, that killed us. Totally slaughtered us. And if we're going to make some cuts, we, we've, it's, it's, staff is our big cut. It's, I mean, and there's seventeen positions that go away, even though they're not, even, even though they're not a lot of dollars for this coming year, but in the future years, because they're permanently gone, that's a lot more dollars than the two hundred and forty-four thousand, I think is the number I remember seeing up there. That's a lot more money than that in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. What bothers me is, is people will sit there and tell you, and, and I'm guilty of this myself, "We've got to take a flat levy, we've got to, we've got to do this, we've got to cut taxes, because our taxes are too tight in the county." For our county portion of that fund, we, I'm going to brag on this, we've done one hell of a job doing this. And as for the board's compensation to it, we've never taken an increase to ourselves. It's been the same pace since they have been on. In fact, so you all know, we gave up six positions of the board from twenty-four to eighteen. So the board has contributed toward these cuts also, by giving up those positions and redistricting and doing everything else. So I'll only, I'll only say that because I'm, I'm not protecting. Everything's on the, on the board here, on the table. And, and I see no way out of this unsustainability right now, especially after I, I don't know how many of you have saw an article from the governor last week, or early this week, it was, I believe, that said, hey, all of, all the departments have to stop spending and reduce spending. And what was his excuse? His excuse was the federal unfunded mandates. See, that's bullshit, because that's what the state gives us all the time. Okay? That's what they give us, unfunded mandates. It's a lot of money we spend every year with unfunded mandates and everything else. So look past all that. The state has taken away funding from us, will take away funding from us in the future on this RTA. Trust me on this one, guys. We're all going to be sitting here a year or two from now, saying, "How are we going to plug the holes?" Because the, the bottom's going to be out of the bucket. Because the state on the RTA, they have no choice, they're going to screw us. This county is going to get totally wiped out on that. And, and you're going to be talking some real cuts in the future here. Real big cuts to transportation, to across the board, to everything. And you're going to be talking some serious cuts in services. And therefore, I, I don't agree with spending RTA. Mr. Scott, I, I will agree with you. I do not believe in spending RTA money, money on, on safety issues and squad cars, when we're not going to have the money in the future to spend on our, on our roads and, and we have bridges falling apart all over the county right now, and, and different things that we need to maintain. And so, so I know this is going to be the hardest budget decision, I think, any of us who've been on the board a long time, or even in the short time, board members. This is a difficult decision this time. And I think you've got to go with your conscience here. But remember, our county portion of the tax bills has shrunk and, and been lowered proportionally every year. And every single person, and there's not a single one, has ever come to me and said, "You lowered my tax bill." Not a single person. So I'm scolding the public on this. You don't pay attention to your tax bills, what's on your tax bills. You don't go to your school boards. Huntley School Board was overtaken by people who said, "We're going to cut your tax bill." What did they do? They took the maximum CPI the next year. So, what, what do you got here? Is, 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 um, I, I guess I'm going to get off my rant. I said I wasn't going to rant this year, but there's my rant for the time before the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to reinforce what Ms. Altos said earlier. And we started this process back in June, and, which was the earliest we've ever started this process. And we did that because of the problems in getting to an ultimate solution. We've had multiple presentations regarding the budget, where we're at, what's going on, what's happening. Many, many more than we've ever had before. And then, we've also had our budget review process, that we've been going through the last couple of months, where every board member and every committee they're on has had the opportunity to listen to the presentations by the various groups, and to question their spending. They ask, "Why do you need this?" Or, "What's going on here? What's happening here?" And out of every one of those meetings have come recommendations, possibly reduce those budgets. And I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, since our last finance committee meeting, there was another seven hundred thousand, thereabouts, in cuts that were found, based on suggestions that were made, coming out of that meeting. So, I, I think, you know, we start with an idea of what solutions it may look like. But as the process moves through, what we've been doing, and I think this is what the intent was of this process since June, we've narrowed and narrowed those down, and gotten a better idea of where we're going to land up this year, and what next year's going to look like. So I remember, back at the June meeting, you said, Carrie, you know, "These are real, real estimates. We're trying to do as good a job as we can, but these are going to change over the next few months." And they have. But again, I think that we're here now, in two weeks, we'll be meeting in finance. And then a week or so after that, we'll be at the COW meeting, and we have to have something ready to go. And these are the scenarios that we have, that we have to work from. I think we're at the point now that these are the decisions the board has to make, based on what was presented to us today. And then everybody's got to figure out what makes sense for them, and how this county's going to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel.
Yeah, that's the last time I'll mute my mic. We've got pushed back in line a long way. Every one of my committee meetings I went to, I asked usually the head of the department, "Where can you raise revenues or cut expenses one to three percent here?" Most of the time, I was given that it's not tenable, it's not doable. I, I wasn't trying to put anybody on the spot, I wasn't exercising any authority. I, I'm more leaning towards what Mrs. Greeno said. The fact is, we don't have enough information. I realize it's our decision as a board, but we are here serving the people. It's the people's voice that we answer to. I was not looking for those things to say, "Bang, that's off your budget, I can cut that three percent, I give my three percent here." I was looking at these, because then you can present to your constituents and say, "Hey, we found a great way to save thirty million dollars, but there'll be no more buses here." Okay? Those are the things, the items I was looking for. Not necessarily expecting to come up with, fill the loophole, but definitely looking some, for some arrows in our quiver. We're expected to sit up here and make, as some people said, a conscience decision about this. This isn't a conscience thing, thi- this is numbers. This is a fiscal thing here, that we can make a decision. Some of them are the same way, going on just two different paths to come to the same result. Yeah, we have to have this money to keep the county operational. I also agree with Eric, the fact that we gave back ten million dollars and then took it, we gave it with the right hand and took it with the left hand. I think we have to do something a little more aggressive this year, and even possibly the next, other than... Where I'm not in favor of the look back is, I could see the look back, but that one million dollar abatement is a joke. We would have to do a look back and a three or four million dollar abatement to actually be doing our jobs up here, and our jobs as a county. This same inflation that affects our county and affects all of our constituents. But I also do agree, this county is run very well, this county operates very well, we do very well. Easier to educate our constituents on just the narrow lane that is the county. Don't have to deal with school, just that narrow lane. But we do need that information, as Ms. Greeno said, we need that information. I can't say that every department here has no inefficiencies and no waste. I can't say that, because I've not been in the departments. No one in this room can tell me how to save money, cut expenses at my business, or gain revenue at my business. You know why? Because you're not in my business. We keep our noses out of your business, other than to ask for a budget every year. Again, if those things had been presented to us, we could have had a little more uniformity of answer here. But we weren't given those answers on the zero to three percent of the two point nine. We were given a complete amalgamation, a complete difference. Yes, we're going to have to take what we've been given here. But we do need to have some of these conversations on or before the COW, in our committee meetings, what it would look like if the people could and would stand up and said, "Hey, you're sixty-five million, that's it, we're cutting it off right here, that's it." If they told us we couldn't have another penny more, and we're not borrowing money, how would we make that work? That is a view, I'm not trying to get there, but I'm trying to have some items to say to people, "Yes, we could, but this would be gone, this would be gone, and only the mandates that we are mandated to would have to be taken care of." That's a different look on McHenry County. A look probably nobody wants, but we have to be able to present that to them. So if we had a little more information, department by department, that could really help us, and helps us in our overall decision process, too. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I agree with a lot of people about, it's, it's tough to take the look back. But Carrie, if you could go to the yellow option, the harder path screen, just make it a little easier for my conversation, I guess. When I look at the top three on the bottom, moving squad car, replacement to RTA, it was just a few years ago, when we were transferring money into, transferring money into transportation to prop up their funds. So that, that doesn't sit well with me. Our bridges in McHenry County, and I'll tell you that I'm thinking my district, because that's where a lot of the ones are that need to be repaired or completely replaced. That doesn't sit well with me. And to move senior services, that's just not something I'd be willing to do either. So, when I take those three things right there, it's one point two million. When you add on the, the six hundred and fifty-nine thousand or whatever, it turns into one point eight million in a shortfall. So, I guess what I'm saying is, if I'm not going to do this, I'm going to be forced to take the look back. I don't know how else we can get to that spot. Thank you.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yeah, just something I want to-
Could you pull your mic to you?
My apologies. I just wanted to reiterate something I forgot in my prior comment. I, I have no problem using the RTA. We're, we're always talking about the risk of future years, and that's how we justified, again, the sixty-six percent increase to the motor fuel fund, tax. It, it's, it's how we, we've done it, we, it, we're always looking for worst-case scenarios. We, I mean, fact of the matter is, we don't know if or how hard we will be, I guess, screwed over by the state of Illinois, but I, I don't think we should be budgeting for that either. That's, that's, that's on them, they certainly don't care, clearly. You know, the unfunded mandates that they put on us, you know, why are we, you know, considering things that have not to even, even come to fruition? And as far as the, you know, we're going to get screwed over on the RTA in the future, you know, maybe that's true, but if there's a hundred and two counties in Illinois, and we're one of two counties that don't do it, you know, I think that's going to get a lot of pushback from the other one hundred, or if we join them, one hundred and one counties that use the RTA for things other than transportation. I, I'd like to see the RTA be used, frankly, more than that. And just to reiterate, I, I would like to, I said the, I, I, the yellow option, it's titled "The Harder Path." I'd like to see a hard path, and then we can, you know, go from there, not just the harder path. I, I think using the revenues, the additional revenues, or the re-appropriated revenues from the RTA makes sense. I think we should also look at further cuts. And on a, on a lighter note, if Mr. Kearns is upset that constituents weren't thanking him for the levy reduction, I think he's got something else in store for him, if he comes back to him with an eleven percent increase. So, um, that's, that's it, I, you know, I'm wholly against it. And I, I'm frankly, I don't know if there's any other members who are going to be commenting, if what we've provided so far helps them, or like straw poll, helps them, or like straw poll? Or what do you recommend?
Listening to what people are saying and, and-
Or what do you recommend?
Listening to what people are saying and, and, hers will, not that I want to be- Listening to what people are saying and, and hers will, not that I want to, hers will, not that I want to be here until two o'clock, will weigh in on, until two o'clock, will weigh in on what's going on, so that I, to weigh, what's going on, so that I maybe have a better idea of where we're at.
Point of clarifications, I've been deeply involved in the RTA conversations all this year, and last stations all this year, and, and last year as well. There are only seven counties on the, and last year as well, there are only seven counties on the, on the RTA that collect RTA sales tax. And maybe you don't remember, last May, there was a proposal to sweep twelve and a half million dollars from McHenry County from our RTA fund, that is our RTA fund. from our RTA fund. That is our RTA funds. So to not consider it in our conversations, the budget going forward, I think is not an endeavor we want to embark on.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is... I can understand that, and you know, if you told me tomorrow that Springfield made another decision that financially hurt McHenry County, it wouldn't be shocking. So I understand why we do it. I guess my larger point is, I have no problem joining the majority of the other counties involved in the RTA for using it for purposes other than transportation. And if Springfield wants to make the decision to, you know, fiscally hurt us yet again, then by all means they can, but I can't control them, unfortunately.
Ms. Campbell?
I was just going to get back to, we were talking about the mental health board and the levy on that, and maybe Kerry, you could speak to this a little bit to add a little bit of clarity, because it sounds, when you take, when you do the lookback, that 10.75 million, whatever it was that we moved over, we're not taking that money back, it just grows the capacity. So when you take the 2.9% on that additional, it's just growing that capacity, it's not taking that money back. I just want to be clear on how that works, and I would like Kerry to answer to that, please.
So I knew that this would come up. So thinking back, probably three, four years, we had talked about we were on an unsustainable path. You know, but it's very hard to explain to constituents that most likely don't understand PTAL. You know, when we have a very strong general fund reserve, how can we raise taxes? Because in this many years, we know we're going to have an issue. So really, I kind of look at mental health separate from this, because we should have been increasing in anticipation of fiscal year '27, at least small amounts. You know, to deal with inflation, we saw that slide on the impacts of inflation. We can only rely on fund reserve for so long, despite it being strong. So really, in a way, you're keeping the money with the taxpayers over those years because of knowing the constraints of PTAL coming up, but then using the space in the levy to take it, as Mike said, only when we need it. So, and you know, too, I guess to Mr. Hendricks' point, it's not static. It's not like as of last year, when mental health came out, everything stopped. You know, we're still seeing a lot of growth in our expenses from wage inflation, software inflation. You know, the commodities have come down. But it's really, you know, it's not that we didn't see this coming. It's what tools do we have to deal with what we see today and the future issues?
So, just a second, I'm not done, thank you.
Ms. Campbell still has a floor.
So, but I get to your point in terms of the fact that we have not been, we haven't taken it periodically. Obviously, you don't want to take it every year, but enough to help grow that base or keep that base healthy to support future expenditures, which is where we are, right? And so when we talk about kicking in the can down the road, I think that's kind of happened here, and that's why we're sitting here. My point about the mental health board levy is more that that additional capacity of 10.7 million at 2.9% would be an additional $311,000. I mean, just kind of crudely looking at the dollars. So that's what that gives you. It's not like it's bringing in millions of dollars. It's just taking, it's just growing that capacity a little bit to help with that. So I'm just clarifying, because there seems to be this, almost like we're double dipping, it's growing the capacity. Which where we should, like, to your point, had we been accounting for inflation right along, we would have been here anyway.
I just want to point a privilege, I want to respond. All right, thank you.
Pull your mic to yourself, please.
And I guess my major point, because I understand that everything else has been growing, right? And then we reduce our capacity, but by increasing the capacity and going back up to that 72 million, we've increased the sales tax, 10.5 million, and we're still taking the same amount of property taxes, we're just using it for other areas. So it's literally no reduction, you know, effectively, if not, you know, a $10.5 million increase by taking the full amount that we cut, recapturing it, which is a very polite way of saying increasing the tax levy, and then, from what we said we were going to do anyway, and then just acting like, you know, oh, we just want, we kept it flat from last year. Like, I just, overall, I don't think taxpayers, to a large degree, I don't think they care how they get taxed. I think they're worried about the total tax burden, and this does nothing to address it. And only in government can we budget this way. This is not how you, this is not how you, you know, if you sit around with your family at the kitchen table, you say we have X amount of money, what do we cut? You know, government is, you know, for better or for worse. One of the only things that can just say, I guess we'll take more money this year. It would be nice if we could all budget that way, but I think, again, you know, whether intended or not, is the complete opposite of what we said we were going to do when we proceeded with the mental health board sales tax. So, I mean, it's, and the fact, the fact that we're just sitting here and we're saying, well, I don't want to do this, I don't want to do that, I don't want to do any of it either. You don't have to cut things, right? I would love for everything to remain the same and grow, and if our tax burden was zero, you know, what a wonderful world that would be. But you were elected, you were all elected to make the hard decisions, and you're taking, well, I don't want to get confrontational, but by doing this, we're doing the exact opposite. We're doing what everybody stereotypes politicians as, which is taking the path of least resistance. And you should be making the harder path decisions, you should be making the hard path decisions. And that's where I'll end it. I promise I won't press my mic again.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I guess we're not going to leave here until a member, Scala, hears from everyone about what... So I decided to speak up on this. First of all, I'd like to thank Kerry and Finance for the wonderful work you've done. I think I have heard from, in all of my committee meetings, I've heard excellent presentations from all of the departments, and far more than we did in previous, in the previous year. And I was just so impressed with what everybody brought to us. And we have done, I think, a wonderful job. I did not, I did not vote in favor of changing the levy from, for mental health to the sales tax. But this board made the decision to do that, and they put a lot of work into it. And I think that that was the decision that they felt that they needed to make at that time. I don't think they lied to the taxpayers when they did this. I think we were doing the same thing then that we are doing now. We were looking for ways we could cut taxes, and that was a good option. So that's why they did what they did then, and that's why I think we have to do what we need to do now. I am in favor of the three-year lookback. I don't think it's taking the easy way out. I think it's taking the way out that makes the most sense. We have, we have looked at every possible way that we could cut. I don't know what else we would ask these departments to do. Every single one has come in and said, okay, here's what we have to do, here's what's mandated, here's what's not mandated. And when we look at those supplemental items, those are the things, I think, in a lot of instances, is what sets McHenry County apart from some of the services that we offer. The social work, the police social work program is excellent. You know, we receive cadews about that. Some of the things that we're doing in the courtrooms, I mean, it's amazing. I wouldn't want to cut any of those things. I think it makes sense to do the three-year lookback. And again, if you look at the county's portion of the taxes, it's very small. What is it, 6.5%? Is that correct? Something 6.5%? So one of the things that we can say to taxpayers when we're knocking on the door is bring your tax bill along with you and say, okay, let's take a look at this. This is what, this is what the county has been doing. This is what we do. We look at our expenses very carefully. So I'm in favor of it, and I don't know what will be presented to us as an option. Thank you.
Mr. Shorten?
So hard path decisions, we make the decision, and those suggestions that if we want to cut something, it has to come from us. So no one's put forward any cuts that are going to impact the property tax levy, which is the thing that causes us all, causes us all the most angst because it hits our taxpayers, our citizens, their perceptions the most. So I'll make the first suggestion for a cut that we can make from the spending that comes out of the property tax levy. We had a discussion in committee about the regional Board of Education, and within that discussion, there was about $100,000, which equated to two positions that are paid out of the property tax levy. And when I asked Regional Superintendent Hartman about it, and I haven't talked to her about this, so I apologize. I don't think she's in the room, but if I hear from her later, that's fine. She articulated that she could sacrifice those, paying for those positions out of the property tax level levy and probably handle it out of grant funding. So there was $100,000. So I'll start the ball rolling. 12 o'clock, let's go.
Ms. Greeno?
I wanted to clarify, the harder, where we ended up with the deficit of 659,907, that includes new growth and full CPI?
Our starting point included new growth and CPI on a base of 65 million. So all of the scenarios include that.
Okay. And then, looking for direction, I would not be in favor of a lookback because it is a sleight of hand to the taxpayers, there's no doubt. We would have had to have had an asterisk on that vote, that referendum, saying, by the way, we can bring this back to you in another form. So just know that as you're voting on it, because that does increase their cost of living in McHenry County, and there is no denying that, no matter what you call it, that's the truth. I, on these items regarding, for example, we talked about medical insurance for the county board to get the real numbers, and then what the impact would be deducting that from salary so that you don't have payroll burden on that, that's significant there. And I agree with Mr. Shorten, that's great. I wonder how many other 100,000s that we could pull up, maybe five more, and get rid of the deficit that we have here.
We'll have to look, we're required by statute to provide staff for her, and I know that, I think that requires further investigation of whether or not she's willing to move those to her grant positions.
Yeah, I mean, but that's where we are, you're asking us for feedback, and so, you know, I think that's great. So that's a start, and if RTA is going to go away, I'm sorry, I don't understand why we would not take advantage of this opportunity right now to fund these vehicle out of that fund. That seems a little, like a very much missed opportunity by not taking advantage of that at this time. So I'm in favor of all of the hardest paths, but I think they're, or harder paths. I just think we need a hardest, the hardest path to take care of that other $600,047. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
Okay. Somebody tell me that the board voted to remove the mental health board from our budget. We didn't, the taxpayers did. The board's vote was to put it before the taxpayers so they could make the choice. So all of you who keep saying that we did that, the taxpayers had their choice to do that. They could have voted no, would have still been on your levy here, okay? The taxpayers, that went to referendum. We voted to put it to referendum. That's what our vote was, okay? So get that out of your conversation, that we did that, okay? Next thing is, I want to talk about, excuse me, point of order is, I got the floor. I've got, I've got point the floor here. I've got the floor here. I got the floor here.
Jim's got the floor.
I've got the floor. So then I want to go down, I want to ask you a couple, I'm going to ask a couple of questions here at the end, but I want to go through this, our total allowable extension, our total extension that we made in the last 10 years. But if you take 2016, it was actually higher than 17. But in 2016, or 17, 79,424, 18, 71,839, I'm rounding these off, 19,698, 20, 693, 21, 696, 22, 70, 23, 71, 24, 73, 25, 65, okay? Then the next slide was, if you did the lookback, go to the next slide there. If you did the lookback, do I understand it would be 74,4? With the lookback, the levy would be?
That's not what this slide's showing. This slide is...
This is just inflation.
This is inflation.
But what is that, with the lookback, what will our levy be next year? If we approve the lookback, plus the CPI, what is it? It's not exactly 74,4, it's 73 something.
Well, no, we don't even have that number up here.
I know it's not on that chart.
No, we don't, we don't have it anywhere in this slide deck.
Tell me what it is.
We have to calculate it for you.
Okay, calculate the levy, what it would be with the lookback. It's not that...
Well, we can, we'll calculate it for you.
Okay. There's a number that I think everyone needs to know to make their decision.
Just under 76.8.
Okay, so 76.8. 2017, we were 79 million, okay? 76.8, and you're going to abate one, some of you want two, some of you want three, whatever. Whatever that number is, that's the number we have to decide on. But I am not for cutting services to our road districts. Remember, if you take the RTA money, we've already taken all the money out of the bridge fund, which had millions in it in the past, and now it has essentially nothing, okay? Because it's being funded out of the RTA. The state and Fed have already told us there are no funds for matching funds through 2028, if ever again. Am I correct in saying that? Okay, that is the state and federal government, not just the federal government, saying that to us. So put that on your thought process here. You cannot sustain this county with those kind of spending cuts or revenue cuts from the state. If you're going to sit there and say, I'm going to rob Peter again... If you're going to sit there and say, I'm going to rob Peter again by buying the squad cars, you got a problem. You're no better than the state. They've robbed Peter, they paid, and, and paid for something else. They've robbed the pensions, they paid for something else. And now the millions of dollars that the state is in debt, and, and the federal government, trillions of dollars, or billions of dollars the state's in debt, the federal government, trillions of dollars in debt, this county has no debt. Should we start borrowing money? Okay, some of you maybe have that thing, or maybe that thought process on, on bonds, whatever. That's not for free, that's like paying your bills on the credit card, you know, using your credit card to pay off everything. You still got the debt, because you still got to pay for that credit card. So do I believe we need to make cuts? Yeah, I believe we need to continue to make cuts, and I believe we need to continue real hard to make more cuts than just the 17 positions. I do agree, we need to look at all departments, health department, all of them, and say, what can we do without, what was mandated in 20, you know, up to 26 by COVID money and funds, what was mandated that we have, and then start eliminating. I agree that that has to happen, but you can't do it now. That you can't, you can't do it now, but you need to look at those positions, and if it's not paid for, those mandated, you know, those things that have been mandated to us, and the funding is gone at that point, get rid of them. And, and so at that, that point has to come, but you got a hard thing right now, is that when, if we take it, when you look at our history of our levies, if, if we don't do something right now, we're getting, those other charts shows you going a lot worse. The one graph on the green bar that showed all the property taxes and expenses, utilization and all that, if you can find that one, Carrie? No, it, it was a sheet that looked, it looked like this. There you go. Now, this, this one has the look back, correct?
Yes.
This one has the look back, and I want you to look at the bottom green line there, the bottom green bar. That look back also includes, and then, and then future on out-throughs at 29, I believe it is?
Yes.
In 29, 28 and 29, you're still in negative, okay? Now, remove the CPI and new growth from that. That number's about four to five million dollars, maybe six million dollars on 29. So we're going to hate to be back here at 29, having the same conversation again, because every year, we're not going to, I'm sure this board probably won't take the maximum CPI every year, because we never have, okay? So in, in three years, very quickly, we're in deep problems again. So we, I, I know we want to talk about things, but we have to also look at reality. We have, we have the contracted pay raises, the contracts for pay raises every year, a million and a half, $2 million on, on, on couple, just a couple of departments, every year, that increases every year of expenses. You don't have any revenue coming to pay for that, okay? It's going to continue on and on unless you do something properly. And, and this is where we make the hard decisions. It's easy for us since 19, or 2017, it was easy to take a flat levy or cut, 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 or cut 10. And the conversations back then that I put before the board, it has to be sustainable when you make cuts, okay? That's sustainability is out the window, folks. You show me where it's sustainable, you show me, you can't cut your way out of this for the, for the future. You can't. So my last question is, you said around $60 for a $350,000 home. If we don't take the look back and everything, what is our tax bill with the, with the CPI increase and everything else to the homeowner, it's still like $27?
20.
20, okay. So from 60 to 20, you got $40 for this. You have $40 difference to your taxpayers, when my tax bill went down more than that, okay? Now I get a different, different level, but I'm not that far off of it. So $40 is your difference here, folks, $40. And it makes the county sustainable, so you don't have to raise it a bunch in the next upcoming years, because you're going to have, you don't, you won't have the base if you don't handle it now. And I'm sorry, I'm not doing my constituents fair if I start cutting the bus services, if I start cutting fixing the roads and the snowplow turns, and, and, and the, and the repairing of the equipment, the maintaining of the bridges. I'm doing a very big, poor representation of my constituents by not biting the bullet this year. You can say all you want, you can argue all you want about, about cut, 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 but that's what we've done the last 10 years or 12 years, we've cut it. And, and we've done it, we've done our job here, we've been doing our job, but we still have to do our job, our job doesn't go away, because it becomes, the easy way out is to say, we're not going to, we're not going to raise the levy, we're not going to do this. Our job doesn't go away, it makes it worse for the, for our constituents in the future. That's what you're doing here by saying you don't want to look at any options. Now, I want to, I'm granting you this, we need to look at cutting more, anything we can cut, we should cut. Any duplicated services that we provide, we should cut. We should look at every department, if they cross over and they do duplicated services, cut it. I agree with you on those things. So let's find it, even whatever we do here, we take the look back, we take the hard path, we got to look at all those, because it's still not sustainable, even by taking the maximum you can take this year, it is not sustainable long-term, because of the cuts we have done in the past. And I agreed with all those cuts in the past, I always have. That's all I got to say.
Okay, we've got a couple of lights on here, people have spoken multiple times, I mean, I would really encourage our board members who have not spoken yet to.
I got five people I'm still looking to hear speak.
Not calling out anyone by name, but today's your day.
Have your voice heard.
Ms. Althoff?
I just want, I'm, because now the conversations went, and I've heard different things. So the slide that is up on the board now, that is a look back including the CPI and?
No.
New growth, no, that is just the look back.
Just a look back.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, in the out-years, in the out-years, it includes CPI and new growth. In this specific fiscal year, it only is just the look back.
Pat? Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'm not in favor of the look back, but I know it might be a hard choice that, that is going to happen, be voted on to here. In my neighborhood, I live in kind of a cookie cutter neighborhood, there's a lot of similar homes as mine. I have a neighbor who's the same age as myself and my wife, they're a couple. Their property taxes are 5,400, mine's over 10,000. It went up 30% last year. A lot of, a lot, most people in my neighborhood, that's similar, that's happened to them, so they come to me and ask me, what can you do about this? Well, I, I can't earn you more money, but I'll do the best I can to try to help save you a couple bucks however I can, and whatever I find out, I'll pass on to you, is what I tell them. I realize we're just the crumb of that pie. So I don't know where, exactly, I don't really know how I'm going to vote on this, but I'm not in favor of the look back. Whatever you work out in finance committee, I'll be watching, and I'll vote my conscience, I have to. Thank you.
And, and just so you know, just, you're all invited to come to finance. I mean, I, I let everyone speak, so I mean, just because it's finance doesn't mean y'all can't come and, and also share your thoughts and views.
Mr. Hendricks?
First off, just regarding Member Kearns's comments about the voters chose, the, the language literally included, discontinue the current property tax levy, funding mental health services in the mental health board, and then on the frequently asked questions, it said, we would remove it from the property tax bill, not re-apportion it, not re-appropriate it, you know, maybe, I can appreciate the legal linguistics there, but that wasn't the, that certainly wasn't what we were preaching during the meetings, and it certainly wasn't what we were telling our constituents. As far as if we're doing suggestions for cuts, I mean, I know last year we bought a health department bus for approximately 700,000, I want to say, eliminate that, sell that, I don't know what it'll go for on the open market, but we make additional money there.
That was purchased with ARPA funds?
So when, when could we sell it if we had to?
I have to look at the capital life of a vehicle, probably at least 10 years.
Okay, we have, we, before COVID, we had zero epidemiologists, now we have three. We have information, or informatics analysts, I imagine if we got rid of the epidemiologist, we might not need that as well. We didn't have that position until this year. We, the, I know the health department spends 80,000 a year, or, don't quote me on that, but roughly 80,000 a year providing hearing services to the school districts, let the school districts figure it out. No, they don't, actually, we spend more, we spend 80,000. So I mean, there's, there's tons of things, and these were more of the things that I was, I was hoping would be at this meeting, you know, maybe.
I need you to get a little closer to your microphone.
The, the green option, right, the easy, the easy stuff, the yellow option, and, and then the red option, and if, and if you're saying, you know, the administration isn't going to provide the red option, then fine, but I mean, those are just off the top of my head, some things that I thought of. So I would like to see it, if I have to come up with it, you know, I'm sure I can run ideas past you, Carrie.
Just for clarification, the health department positions you're speaking about, those are also funded with ARPA, and all of the ARPA, the only thing I included in FY27 projection are things we have to do. So none of the positions are part of this conversation at all, that would be a decision next year, if you want to move that to the general fund, but for now, for just, keep things clear, there's no positions or services that we don't have to provide that are included in this projection.
So I, I guess my question then, it's funded through ARPA.
Correct.
But is it funded like job-specific for ARPA, or can it just be shifted to a different position, and we eliminate these three?
So that position is an ARPA-approved position?
I, I understand that.
So when ARPA goes away, if the board chooses not to fund those positions, then they would go away?
But I guess what I'm saying, you, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is, ARPA kind of locks us into it, correct? For now, because we appropriated it. Now, when we appropriated it, was it appropriated to that specific position?
Yes.
Or can we shift the, the payroll, the, say, the epidemiologists, to a different payroll position in the health department? No, I would first like to hear from Carrie.
There, there is some shifting allowed, I would have to look into it. I believe we are locked into the positions because it was an agreement signed based on that position, but I will, and it has to be a similar function, so it's not like we could shift it to cover, yeah.
No, I understand, it would have to be at a minimum somewhere within the health department, in a, in a related field, right?
It could be, because the US Treasury has very specific categories, which I have to look to see which one these are in, it could be specifically collecting data, there, you know, to that level.
Okay, so we could, for instance, we could take the epidemiologist, potentially at least, take the epidemiologist's payroll, I guess, burden, and switch it over to the, I assume, a related position, like collecting data, informatics analyst?
Also ARPA.
Also ARPA, all right.
Yes.
But, but there is payroll, there, there is fund shifting in ARPA that can occur, is what you said, you're not 100% sure which, what, where.
There's a lot of rules and a lot of restrictions that Carrie Johnson understands a lot better, so if you have very specific questions, we can make sure it's following all the rules. Once we have them into a category, it's difficult to move them out of that category.
Out of the category, but not the position?
The position is ARPA-approved, the US Treasury category, that position is locked into that.
I, I understand that, I'm just saying.
I think what you're trying to ask is.
Is it locked to the position or locked to the field?
So what Carrie's trying to say is that the, the ARPA positions, the specifically that you're talking about, when ARPA monies go away, the department won't have the ability to take the funds for those specific positions and move it to something else, or hire more people in that department. Those funds literally go away, and if collectively, the 18 of us want to keep those positions, then by our action of actually approving those positions, they can come back again, but they go away based on the ARPA dollars. Does that kind of answer your question?
No, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, can we eliminate, theoretically, could we eliminate those three positions today and use what was appropriated for those positions to a separate, related position?
The answer is no.
If you did that furthermore, then you just kicked the can, right? You've taken general fund positions now, funding with ARPA, and then we sit here next year and trying to fund those general fund positions, and there's no more ARPA money.
If I remember correctly. If I remember correctly, all of these positions were passed by resolution by the county board for the position itself. It wasn't.
Yes, that is true, but to answer your question, no, we can't. I don't believe that the guidelines that the government put out, we would be allowed to do that, because the whole point of, again, ARPA dollars are because of the pandemic, we had to hire people in order to make us get through the pandemic. So if we, if we suddenly, as a county, just suddenly say, well, we don't have those problems anymore, well, then that kind of goes right back in the face of what the dollars were allocated for to begin with.
No, I, I can appreciate that, okay.
Ms. Althoff, do you have something to add?
I just, in, in response to some of the concerns, I think that Ms. Adamson did a remarkable job, and she presented it at Public Health and Community Services. So one of the positions, the epidemiologist, is mandated, so even if, if we had the three and the ARPA funds go away, there's only two positions, and they presented in committee that once the grant was done, the positions would be done. So just so you know that, and I would be happy to share this graph of everything that the health department does, that's broken down into mandated, and, and then what they consider to be essential, and what can be eliminated or not. So I'll, I'll give that maybe to Kathy, and she can get it out to everybody. Thanks.
Ms. Von Bergen?
Thank you. While I'm leaning towards supporting the look back option, really at this point, I have only seen that breakdown of mandated versus non-mandated services and their funding source provided by the health department. I'm not sure if, if there's anything available for other departments, but I do believe, you know, moving forward, that this type of information from all departments should be available. That way, if, if cuts do need to be made, you know, we can make a more informed decision about where to reduce spending and how those choices would impact our constituents. Thank you.
Any others?
I got three people haven't spoken. I got three people that haven't spoke yet. I don't have to call y'all, but I think we know who they are.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, guys. Uh, last time we met here, you had talking about, um, Valley High taking up maybe up to five hundred thousand dollars of our, is there any way of getting that money back? Was that just a?
Yeah, so that is actually when we say an allocation, um, overhead allocation from the enterprise funds. So Valley High and ETSB are our two enterprise funds. So if you remember, those are the ones that really are recorded and function more like a business. So it is appropriate for us, you know, the county provides, the general fund provides, you know, HR, payroll, those types of services. So we have a model where we look at the total costs of the, um, general fund, admin costs, overhead costs, and we allocate that. So one of the green options was about five hundred thirty four thousand. That is doing that for Valley High and ETSB.
We charging them back for the?
Correct, charging them back for the, because, you know, really if you look like if it's run like a business, but their current financials don't include the cost of payroll, the financial system administration, or county, you know, county general administration, it is appropriate to have those costs included.
Okay, and I know in, uh, planning and development, they had talked about possibly raising the rates for permitting. Um, is this involved in any, any of these numbers?
So those numbers are already included in the, in the first number that we saw with the three point seven reduction. I think that discussion, yeah.
I mean, I think it's a little too much to open up, it's estimated at three percent. Okay, um, I guess, uh, I am in kind of a favor of doing the look back, just to try and, like you say, reset it. My question, I've, I've talked to a lot of my constituents, I kinda use a six point five percent number a lot, you know, um, looking back if it's, if it goes to seventy four, is that more or less like a seven point four percent?
So, so really the seventy four, that was just an exercise, I guess.
No, he's asking what percent.
Percentage wise, you know, cause.
Percentage of people's property tax bill.
You know, when, when I look at that pie that, uh, on our tax bill, a lot of times when I look at it, it's, it's six point five, six point two to six point five. If we do the look back, what does that kinda look at as a percentage wise? Are we?
I guess it assumes what the other districts are going to do. Let's see if it went from, where were we prior?
We, we could make some estimates on there, but we need a couple more data points, like would there be an abatement? You know, would we put, would we put the CPI and the new growth on top of the look back? You know, so we get, come, we can absolutely get that estimate, uh, but we just need to have a few more pieces of puzzle.
Thank you. Joe or Carl?
All right, sir. Probably step in it. But as much as I love the, the McHenry natural outdoors, the beauty that we have, I've heard numbers bandied around that they're in possession of two hundred plus million dollars worth of property, that they're the number one property owners in McHenry. It's not gonna do a whole lot for this year's budget, but is there any look at, hey, guys, maybe you need to start selling off some of that property? Had just an idea and I probably stepped in it.
No, I don't think you stepped in it. I think that's a, a fair question to ask them, but, but that's out of our purview. I mean, I don't know how you tell them what to do.
It, it wouldn't affect our general fund anyway.
It, it wouldn't, but I, to the, to his question, so. Yeah, so if they did sell it, it would go back into their coffers to do with as they so chose.
Mr. Goddard Muller.
It would also require state legislation to allow us to sell property. We don't, we don't, the conservation district does not have the authority to sell it once it gets in their hands.
Do you have anything you wanna weigh in on this, uh, look back, Joe?
Um, I, I don't think we've given them enough back on the million dollars. That's my concern. Um, I don't think that's enough to give back. I don't think we have to come, um, full swing at one time. I, I agree FICO owes us a bunch of money, but I don't think we have to do it at once in one bite. I think we can do it over time.
Mr. Hendricks.
How many vacant positions are currently open? I mean, approximately, I'm not gonna hold you to it that badly.
The general fund is, is what you're interested in and we can get you that.
Yeah, I don't.
And then, okay, I would like that information. And then how much do we, you said you don't budget for all of them, which makes sense. Is it fifty percent that we budget for, seventy percent?
So, so we don't budget with the vacancies really like one to one? Because sometimes they're vacant for three months and then they're open. So what we do for all the general fund, non-union, um, personnel expense is we look at their total personnel and we hold some of that back. So in finance, when I presented the non-departmental budget, there's, um, a merit holdback. So we look at two percent for the large departments, one percent, uh, or not merit, uh, vacant position holdback. Two percent for the large department, one percent for the smaller ones, and then we take half of that. Because really up until twenty twenty four, we weren't even using that. You know, but it's, it's been very difficult coming out of COVID. We, we had huge number of vacancies and then all of a sudden we have all these filled positions. So we kind of address it in a global, if that makes sense. But, but some of the positions that have been on that list for a long time, they don't even start out in that number where we reduce the one or two percent.
So how, I guess how much is budgeted then, like I guess county wide for those vacant positions?
Half a million.
Half a million.
And that's in non-departmental and kind of the, the reasoning behind that is because that's the budget that is in control of the finance and audit committee. So that's under your review. And if, you know, departments, not that we have any that do it, but you know, if you have additional personnel budget, you know, maybe you could move things around or give this position a bump to stay within that budget, but kind of outside of what, um, per policy, but maybe a little bit outside of the initial intended use. So by keeping it in the, in the non-departmental, then we control what goes back to them as they need it.
So if, if we just had a hiring freeze of half the positions, that'd be two hundred and fifty thousand for the year?
I don't, I'm not sure what you, so I.
Well, we hold back five hundred thousand.
Because that's what, cause we're saying, we budget, let's say we budget a full FTE. And we assume that that FTE leaves for two months and then gets rehired. So we wanna hold back that portion, um, that, that they're not going to use. And we, we take half. And again, it's on, I don't even know, probably five hundred positions. So that's why we look at it as a pool instead of per position.
But if we just had a higher, out of all the vacant positions coming out of the general fund, if we just had a, if staff could theoretically go, say, these are the, if, if we have to have a hiring freeze, this is the hiring freeze on the half. And that would essentially provide two hundred and fifty thousand.
If we didn't backfill the positions as they became vacant.
I'd like to look at that.
I guess it depends on the position, it's just non-union.
I'm counting about, this is a couple weeks old, forty three general fund positions that are vacant. And I'm, you know, I'm understanding, I'm just eyeballing this. That's not including grants, but they're still in the general fund. And we just took away eighteen.
How many of them are from?
Of those forty three, we just took away eighteen.
Of, of the forty three?
Of the forty three, we just took away eighteen.
So we're looking at, what is it, forty or twenty one?
I'm ballparking you about half of them, yeah. So there's not a lot left.
But, and the average, I think, member scholar said was eighty five thousand a position. So if we did a hiring freeze on those remaining half, it would be ten, eight hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not saying we do that, I'm just, yes.
You, I, I don't think a good way to manage is arbitrary across the board freezes. I think, I still think the better way to do it is to look at who needs the positions and, um, you know, where's the pressure point?
And I can appreciate, I appreciate that, but you know, on the one hand of being told it's members' responsibility to come up with the policy. And then on the other hand, I'm getting input about what the policy should be. So I, I'm fine, but I, I want to see additional cuts. And, and if you have a better way, which I'm sure you do, you, you, you know everything much better than I do. But then I want to see that. I wanna see, you know, at least the six hundred thousand we're short, not including, you know, suggestions that members have in additional cuts. That, I mean, I would appreciate if we could get that by finance. It's six hundred thousand, I mean, member, member short, I almost called it member shorting. Member short, you know, you know, off the rip started us off with a hundred thousand dollars in savings. If administration could, on top of that, provide another six hundred thousand dollars, then maybe we're looking at something that I guess provides something the harderer, you know, outlook. It doesn't mean you necessarily agree with it. When you, if, you know, if you choose to present that at finance, and I hope you will, but if you choose that, you can, you know, scream about how you don't agree with it, that's fine, but I would just at least like those options on the table.
See no other comments?
Okay, so this is kinda what I heard. And you guys can either shake your heads or, uh, you know, shoot darts at me. But, um, I kinda heard that there seems to be a majority of people that are interested in doing the look back. So I'm gonna kinda go forward with that concept. I, I, I think the abatement side of that look back, I think, is something that as a board, if you guys are in favor of, we don't necessarily set in the budget. So here's my thought process on that. So the abatement is a transactional, um, computation that's done in the, in the clerk's office, right? So when they're setting, setting the levies. So that's something that we have until, and I would have to ask Joe specifically how long we have, but probably till about February at least, maybe March. My concept or my thought is, is that we continue to look at all options in regard to what we can do to reduce our budget. Um, and in turn, be able to abate more dollars. So what was presented was about a million dollars. So if we continue to look at ways that we can continue to cut, we can abate more than a million dollars. And to me, that's something that we collectively still have to decide. And it's gonna take work to come and finalize those things. But for budgetary purposes, you know, we don't have to make that decision before it goes on thirty day review. Because it's a, it's a transactional, you know, we, we set the levy and it's automatically abated back. So that's kinda, after hearing everybody and hearing discussion, that's kinda what my thought process is. Is that a good thought process? Am I a moron? Beside, in this particular situation.
Wait, don't ask that.
Yeah, um, you know, I mean, what do you, what do you, what do you guys wanna do? And again, I encourage all of you to come to finance. I, you know, I know it's another meeting and it's more mudding time and stuff, but I got thumbs up, thumbs down, conceptually? Up, 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 down, down?
Okay.
Okay, I kinda see more thumbs up than thumbs down. So we'll kinda, we'll move forward with that. Thank you very much.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scholar makes the motion. Mr. Collins seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day.